Okay. I'd like to call a order. The Miami'sburg City School Board Meeting for March 16th, 2023. Would all please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The district's mission is to foster a positive and nurturing and safe environment to inspire and support ongoing learning and the development of individuals as productive members of society. We must be able to conduct our meetings in an orderly fashion. Our expectations at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event that anyone is disruptive or interferes with the meeting, they will be asked to leave the meeting. If they do not, we will request that the law enforcement assist them in the process. Roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Here.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
Mr. Homan?
Here.
And I'm here.
Next, we go to the adoption of the agenda. It is recommended that the adoption of the agenda for March 16th, 2023. I have no motion yet. Item D is approval of the minutes for the March 16th, 2023, March 16th, 2023 Board Agenda. Approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on February 16th, 2023, and the special board meeting session held on February 21st, 2023. Any comments or discussion up to this point? Okay, we'll move on. Item E, the approval of the financial report. It is recommended that we approve the financial report for February 28th of 2023. I will... Mr. Blevins, you have anything to report?
Yeah, just the revenues were down this month in comparison to last year, and this was because of a timing issue when we received the tax advance. So next month, we're going to see if the revenues are going to be higher by comparison from last year. That's really the only big change.
Okay, good. We like how the higher revenue is.
Right.
Next, we move on to the recognition of citizen, staff, and students. I'm going to let a representative take this over from here.
Mr. Palmer, would you like to come forward, please?
We practiced. He's ready.
All right. The Miami'sburg February District Student of the Month is eighth grader Brian Palmer. Brian was nominated by the Miami'sburg Middle School Team Nine Teachers and Councilor Monique Hobbs. They said Miami'sburg Middle School is very proud to recognize eighth grader Brian Palmer as our February Building Student of the Month. Brian has consistently demonstrates our PBIS values, respect, responsibility, and safety. Brian has a tendency beyond his years which propels him towards his future goals. He has a strong interest in the medical field and plans to become an orthodontist. Therefore, he places a high value on academics and learning. As an eighth grader, Brian achieves academic excellence in all classes in spite of a very rigorous schedule. His school schedule includes two high school level classes as well as one college level course. He enjoys learning, so feels that he is not something he has to do, but something that he wants to do. Time management is important to his success, and he spends about one-half of those hours each day after school on assignments before participating in sports. Brian enjoys participating in the Miami'sburg football and track teams, which are almost daily commitments, which places practices, games, and weightlifting. A strong focus on the task at hand helps him to be a better player and helps him support his teammates. Involvement with his teammates is important to him, as he likes working towards a common goal. He strives to always treat others with respect and feels that simple manners go a long way. Brian has learned a lot through his career exploration activities at the Miami'sburg Middle School, and he has already researched colleges that are in alignment with his future as he is planning. He hopes to attend the University of Cincinnati or possibly Louisiana State University. Both are confident that he will reach his goals. Congratulations, Mr. Brian Palmer.
Well, Brian, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present you with a medallion. And you're welcome. So what's your adventure track?
Oh, I do both. All right. Football. I'm a board member.
So, um, orthodontist. So what do you think about a visalign? Do you have a visalign? Do you have braces? So what do you think of your visalign?
It's better than everything.
Okay. I also have the line. So what about you? Okay. I have a celebration party, right? When we get a weekend off. Well, um, you want to bring your pants up, and we'll get a picture? And then I think the Board of Education, let's shake your hand. That's okay. Well, how exciting. What college class are you taking right now?
Um, right, I'm taking the art curriculum.
Excellent. I don't know. Is this your first college courses? Uh, I feel like you're going to be more comfortable. So you already have three credit hours? Excellent. Well, Mrs. Thomas, would you like to come up and join the picture?
Sure.
How exciting. Are you going to watch me? Because you can trip in once, Chris.
I would love to.
You're a shirker. Yes. We'll get a picture all together, and then we'll have a picture with your family. So did you bring... Did you bring along? They didn't have you in there.
Uh...
Was your mom?
Yeah.
Oh, do you have any siblings?
Uh, yes, but she is.
Oh, okay. We're seeing tomorrow. It's a special evening. Exciting competition. Are you going to cheer her up? Well, congratulations. And I think, uh, thank you. She had a dream. Excellent. Okay, I'll thank her. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Sir? Congratulations, Bob.
Oh, wait, one more question. Who did you pick for your bracket? Are you a basketball fan? Are you watching? You didn't even do the bracket? Okay. You're awesome. Thank you.
Not Indiana.
Keep it up. Okay. Next on the agenda is we have the presentation from Kinder Elementary School. Mrs. Hebler.
Alrighty. Thank you for letting me come tonight. I had a whole little spiel I was going to give you. And then this morning, dangerously, I was flipping through my cellphone while on the treadmill. And, um, right? Not a good idea, but that's okay. And a memory came up. And it turns out I'm going to get emotional. It was four years ago today that Miami'sburg City Schools decided to give a redhead with big dreams and a big mouth the chance to become a school leader.
Who was that?
I don't know. But I... It really hit me, and I thought about how much I love what I'm doing. And one of the greatest inspirations for me was a TED Talk I saw about a decade ago. And Benjamin Zander, who was the conductor of the Boston Philharmonic, said, "I know I've been the leader my players need when I see their eyes are shining." And I just thought about that, shining with pride. And so I hope, gosh, I'm a nerd. While you're sitting there, I hope you see that my eyes are shining, and you know that you've been the leadership that I need. And in turn, tonight, I'm going to let you see that shine in the students of Kinder Elementary as they show some of the growth they've made this year, and hope that it resonates with you, the extreme laser focus on academics and character building, and how the teachers and staff are the leaders our children need them to be. So if you want to hit play, I'll sit down and be quiet.
Is there volume?
There are good ones. Any one?
Okay.
Oh, hi, I didn't see there. I'm Jasmine here from Kinder Elementary, and I'm a teacher. I like respectful people because it's just a way to follow, and it's a way to share those inside feelings. All the kids in Kinder Elementary just get to say the way... Get to say it the way they feel. Sometimes they're serious questions, and sometimes they're pretty funny. No matter what kind of questions, we always find a way to pay off these.
Oh, hello. Hi, I'm Andrew from Kinder Elementary, and I'm a teacher. I feel like purposeful people makes you a better person and a better friend. If you're learning about honesty, you learn to think, so what's the honest thing to do in a situation, and what's an ultimate relationship and reputation? When you're learning about empathy, you learn what empathy is, which in terms of strengths and weaknesses. I love peaceful people because you learn about perseverance. Perseverance is not easy. It's about doing a task no matter how hard or difficult it is. You keep going the bad way. Cooperation is working as a team or partner, and you communicate with your partner team, and come up with ideas, and take those small ideas up and come up, and come up with even bigger and better ideas.
I am in Ms. Glado's class for a circle today about respect. Is there anyone that can tell me what respect means? Spike?
The same feeling when all people are there and treating you like a parent.
Start. Why do we need to be respectful in a circle? Sandy? Nice. Why else? Hey. All right, so let's get to the norms. What are the norms of a circle? Mohammed? Stay on topic. Antonio? I love it. Eli? I love it. And last, the circle. Hey, Jayden, what's responsibility? Nice. And talk to me about what's behind you. The top goals. Can you explain this to me?
Yes.
So what was your target? What obstacles did you have?
Uh, obstacles, uh, trouble.
And did you make it?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations. Hey, guys, what are you doing?
Gratitude circle.
A gratitude circle? Will you show me now?
Yeah.
All right.
There's Tommy. You're a bully.
And switch. And switch. How could you use the truth choices to settle an argument in football?
Um, like, gain your emotions, and like, I feel like, like, you're like an ice statement.
Could you give us an example of an ice statement?
I feel when you... I feel upset when you saw a big football, and I want to be in the back.
Oh, what would you say if you said that to you?
I would, I would, you know, try to, I would do a better sport at home.
Hi, Nadine. One way we use empathy is ice statements. Can you tell me about a time you used an ice statement?
Uh, when somebody was messing with me in class, and I told them, I feel mad when you mess with me, and I, you know, you're wet, you're soft.
Did it work?
Yeah.
In the past, before you really knew ice statements, what would you have done? And would that have worked? All right. So how do you feel about ice statements?
I would do, uh...
You think you should what you want? Thanks. Hey, Hank, what is that behind you?
Hank.
Do you know why I wanted to bring you up to talk about it?
Uh, because, um, perseverance.
Because perseverance? It was a great way to use what you've learned. Can you tell us what is perseverance?
Perseverance is pushing yourself to achieve results.
And your card says, "I love your cooking, encouragement, I like to try your cooking," and how much you persevered when your dad was deployed. What does that mean to you, how much you persevered?
It means a lot to me because my dad was a boy, and he put a hard on her because she had to just always run in and run around, and one, two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, ten. And I'm always, I'm always, you know, he, uh, take it, to score, to take it, take, you know, put it in her bag, and find her guys for...
So she had a lot of obstacles? And she persevered?
Yes.
Do you think that's something you can do in the future, too? Perfect. I just have to focus in on honesty. Can you read the self-nation with me?
Honesty is being truthful in what you say and do.
Shines and we need, it is very important that we are honest about our feelings. Because if we can be honest about our feelings, then we can always make sure that we get what we need, and we can help other people get what they need. Remember the words? Does anybody that would like to share any of yours? And so, look, can you tell me how like your feeling this morning? Can see, what do you feel?
Honesty is something you don't wear on your sleeves. It's the way to make your heart easier to see. Let's be honest, being honest shows the good inside of you. Let's be honest, being honest shows the light inside of you. Sometimes the truth is hard to say, but in the end, it will be okay. It will be okay.
Good job. Thank you, Mrs. Huber. Excellent.
I love the end of that. One, when the little girl says right at the end, it's about her teacher. It said, I forget exactly what it was, but it was really neat how they ended right there. It's like she loved her, because of you, because I love you, teacher, or something like that. That was pretty cool. Okay, let's move on then to, uh, thank you, by the way, and thank all of the children, too, because that was fabulous. Oh, yes? Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Well, National School Library Month. It is recommended that the Board of Education recognize April as National School Library Month. The theme for National Library Week 2022, For a Richer, Fuller Life, Read, promotes the idea that libraries are places to get connected to technology by using broadband computers and other resources. I think that should have been 2023?
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah. Okay. Libraries also offer opportunities to connect with media, programs, ideas, and classes in addition to books. Most importantly, libraries also connect communities to each other. Overall, the theme is an explicit call to action, an invitation for communities to join, visit, or advocate for their local libraries. First sponsored in 1958, National Library Month is a national observance sponsored by the American Library Association, ALA, and libraries across the country each April. It is a time to celebrate the contributions of our nation's libraries and librarians and to promote library use and support. It is recommended that the Board of Education express its appreciation for our school media specialists and media paraprofessionals who teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, provide literature appreciation activities, support classroom literacy instruction, and guide and encourage content in recreational reading to every student.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Well, also, the Miami'sburg City School District would also like to recognize the following groups on their special days. School Librarian Appreciation Day will be Wednesday, April 4th. Assistant Principals Appreciation Week, Wednesday, April 3rd through the 7th. Paraprofessional Appreciation Day will be Wednesday, April 5th. And National Volunteer Appreciation Week will be April 17th through the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
You're welcome.
Mr. Homan, would you just say, like, what some of these people do that we are talking about here, please?
Yeah, so, as Mr. Lewis talked about, our school librarians or media paraprofessionals, they assist a lot with classroom teachers in incorporating skills they're learning in the classroom and incorporating those within their library sessions each week in terms of that. They also do a lot with helping students understand research in different ways, to find materials for research projects. Assistant Principals, I think everyone kind of knows what they kind of do, anything and everything to get things done.
I just remember them getting all the dirty jobs.
I don't know. It takes everyone to do everything together, so...
I'm kidding, of course.
And then our paraprofessionals, they work, all of our paraprofessionals in the district work with students, help to achieve their goals in the classroom to make sure they can have the best access to the general curriculum as everyone else. And then, of course, National Volunteer, you know, we're very grateful for all of our volunteers in the district. We have hundreds and hundreds of people that come in and volunteer for us every year, from working in the classrooms, working in the offices, to our PTAs, PTOs, our boosters. When you think of all the booster programs we have out there, those are all volunteers. And so when you think of all of our fine arts, all of our athletics, of our PTO, PTAs, they would not be functioning without these volunteers. So we are very appreciative of them.
All right. Thank you, sir. I just felt like that for everything that they do, we should have delineated it a little bit so that everybody knows who we're talking about. Next, item G on the agenda is board discussion. Tonight, we have Mr. Kleber from the Technology Department.
Well, thanks for having me here tonight. I thought what we do tonight, like, I wrote out a report for all of you to read. I don't need to read through every line item. You guys are capable of reading through that. Just in case there's questions that you have that you want to ask at the end, I'm just going to highlight some things. And I want to piggyback off something that Rebecca said. You know, I'm finishing my second year here in Miami'sburg, and her phrase, "There's a lot of shining eyes," resonates with me. I see that, too. And it starts from the top, and it's all the way down. I know I'm in a good district because I see a lot of shining lights in people's eyes all the time. For the tech department, this year, we underwent a pretty significant change. We lost a team member that had been with us for a very long time, Miss Bonnie Swainy. She is loving retirement, and I don't think she's looked back one bit. I've talked to her a couple of times, and I was like, "Do you miss it?" And she goes, "I miss the people, I don't miss the work." So Bonnie was instrumental in a lot of things in the tech department. She was very much the heart and soul. And when she sat, she sprang this on me when I gave her a review last year, or in November. And I remember sitting in the review and like, I just don't know how we're going to do this. But she did a great job of training me. But yeah, I mean, I know I'm supposed to be the guy in charge, but let's be real, she was the one in charge, and she was running things. And she did a good job of training her successor, Miss Jessica Shepherd. And we have not missed a beat since Jessica has stepped in and taken over that role. She's done a fantastic job. And I think that's a testament to the kind of people that you have in this district, that people can just step up and fill, you know, a big void, is what Bonnie left. And we have not really suffered anything through that change at all. And I think another piece of that is to, the great team that I got to be part of when I joined here. The tech department, under, you know, Bonnie and Mark, who were kind of leading things, set the district up very well with all of the things that they put in motion. You know, like, I told them when I come in, when I came in, I was like, you know, yeah, I want us to grow, I want us to innovate, I want us to get better, but I don't want to screw anything up either that you guys have started. And, you know, I told them, my biggest thing will be not to screw up anything that you've started. So like, our great tech team is like, one of the high points of being part of this district for me. So I just wanted to talk about our team. On the report that I provided for you, I gave you a little bit of a one-to-one update. Things are going very well with our one-to-one. All of our classrooms have, in the elementary level, have carts with 30 Chromebooks on them, and they're getting used quite a bit. We're in a good spot with our Chromebook fleet. We don't have any set to expire until next year, and that's very few. 2026 will be a big year for us because of the way that the one-to-one happened. We bought a lot of Chromebooks during the COVID years, and those will all be coming to a point where they won't be able to auto-update anymore in 2026. So we're working on ways to get ahead of that. But our one-to-one is alive and well. Some of the projects that you see listed there are a result of the replacement cycles that the tech team has put in place. This summer, I think we will have gone through every building and replaced all of the projectors. The middle school will be the last one to receive the updated projectors. We're updating some of our PCs in various labs and in some buildings, Bauer and Medler View. And there's some exciting programs starting, like, at the high school. There's going to be a production processes class that Dwayne Hensley and Tim Fries will be leading up. If you have not had a chance to see the great work that they're doing in that, in those areas, I highlighted both of them in our recent tech newsletter. They're just, I've never seen anything like this go on in a high school. And maybe I haven't been to enough high schools, but what they're doing is pretty remarkable. Along with that, you know, we take advantage of E-rate money every year. And this year, we will have all of our network infrastructure on one platform. Medler View will be the last piece of that. And we will have access points in every one of our classrooms. So that's, we're stepping in the right direction in all of that. One of the things that we have done, starting last year, was we put in place a new website and an app, and all of that has rolled out. Well, there was, you know, we had some hiccups with rooms, the parent-teacher chat part, but that whole transition, honestly, was because some people worked really hard. Brenda Hibbert did a tremendous amount of work transitioning our old website to our new website. And Stacy Moore and Melissa Shade have put in a lot of time and effort to keeping our rooms app up and going and moving in a positive direction. So we're moving in a lot of great, positive directions with those changes. I have also put on here, attached to... I've also put on here, attached to the report, some information about the replacement cycles that we will be doing coming up, and that's projected out for about 10 years, I think. And Mark started that many, many years ago, and honestly, the lists on there continue to grow as we find new things that we need to replace and maintain, but we are on track, and we're doing a great job, I think, of staying ahead of any potential issues there. Some of the projects that we have in the works, we're in the planning stages of moving our miamisburg.k12.oh.us domain to a more, a shorter domain, msbgcs.com. We'll be taking steps in the fall to kind of plan for that change to happen in the summer of 2024. Our tech coach meetings, we just had one tonight, have been going great. We're highlighting, for the, what we're trying to do is just highlight the resources that we have available and encouraging folks to use them, and I think we're gaining traction in all of that. Like I mentioned before, I started a monthly tech newsletter, which I've gotten a lot of great feedback about. It seems to be pretty widely accepted, and people have emailed me and said, you know, "A particular resource was very helpful to them in the classroom many times." So I think we're getting the word out about all these resources. One of the things that, we were in a meeting with Thrill Share, our website developer, with our building secretaries, and one of the things that I realized very quickly is, they don't get a lot of chances to get together to share ideas, because when we pulled them together for the meeting, after the meeting, they kind of hung out there and were like, "Hey, how do you do this?" And I think finding ways to bring more opportunities for them to share ideas and also to, you know, give them some technology PD if there's areas where they want to learn something new, also extend that to our support staff, our custodians, and bus drivers and cafeteria workers who don't really get a chance to, you know, I think technology's been kind of a new thing for them, you know, checking email, getting on to kiosk, or getting on to do the training modules. So those are things that we're going to look at to try to help them move along in a positive direction with technology. And then, something that has come up as a result of our tech coach conversations is possibly the need for us to do a parent night for technology to, because it's, especially this year, there has been a lot of parents contacting me directly with, "Well, you know, can you recommend a way to, you know, help me manage what my student's doing on social media, or how do I block these websites?" And I think there is a need to help our parents through that process. We're giving their children Chromebooks, and they're expected to bring Chromebooks, and I think probably having some kind of program in place to kind of help them manage all of that may be, is something that I want to shoot for doing in the fall of next school year. So those are some of the upcoming things, and that was a pretty quick summary of the report. I wanted to give you guys time to ask questions or, you know, provide feedback about things that maybe you'd like to see, too.
One thing that I didn't see on there was the hotspots for, you know, the families that can't necessarily afford the internet. How's that going?
Honestly, I don't think there's a huge need for that. Like, I don't know that we get very many requests for that at all.
Three now? That's good. Good. I also, any questions, Mr. Kleber?
Absolutely. And further on in your agenda, I think in Area 7, I think I saw there's going to be some items about our contracts with Meta. And, you know, if you don't know, Meta is the entity that provides our school with internet access. So typically, we enter into a five-year contract with them at a time. Our contract, our recent contract has expired, and we had to put it out to bid through E-Rate and award them the contract again. So it'll be for another five years. In this round, we are including internet access for Harmon Field so that we can put cameras on the field, we can do some wireless concessions and ticketing that will make that whole process a lot easier. And then, one of the things that, you know, this round of the contract, we had been, all of our buildings, most of our buildings connect back to our middle school, which is our hub, and we have internet access coming into the middle school and then gets farmed out to the rest of the buildings. Those connections to those other buildings were at a 500-megabit speed. This time around, the price for one gig connections, which is double the speed, is the same as it was for 500 last cycle. So we're actually doubling our connection speed between all of our buildings and our hub at the middle school. So that's going to be a big deal. We still will have a two-gigabyte pipe to the internet, which seems to be serving us well for the time being. But as we get more and more into online programming and streaming, there may be a need down the road, even during this five-year contract, that we might have to up our connection out to the internet. So just, is there anything else you want me to cover about that?
No.
Okay.
That's great. That was really good, thanks.
Thanks, Sandy. Every time I have a question for you, you answer me so fast, and he's even given me a little tutorial once. That really was helpful.
Well, good.
I appreciate that. You know, I haven't been in the work field for a long time, so.
You still got it?
It's helpful.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you for your help Tuesday. By the way, whenever I think of Bonnie Swainy, I can remember one of our board members, I think his initials are DT. I was having trouble with my Chromebook, of course, my usual, and Bonnie was on vacation, which I didn't know, so I called, she gave me her cell number years ago. So I call her, and she's down on the beach and takes time out to tell me how to fix something that was on there, you know, and it was on Sunday on top of it. So anyway, that's the type of person she was, and she just laughed and went on, you know. So, thank you. That was very, very, very good. Next, we will move on to Item H, the approval of meeting opening items A through G. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the meeting opening items A through G. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of meeting opening items A through G. Second.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mr. Amsler. Any questions at all, last questions about anything that we discussed? No. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes. I could only.
You can speak for me, please. Okay, next, we move on to Section 3, it's a revision approval of 2023-2024, excuse me, school calendar. The Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education adopt the revised 2023-2024 school year calendar. Mrs. Superintendent?
Well, I don't know if Mr. Homan wants to speak, so if I speak wrong, Mr. Homan, let me know. We made some modifications to the calendar when it was approved, I think in the fall. We've added some days. Some things to note are the election days. If you look at November, the election day in November, we are going to make that a personalized learning day for our students. So they will not be at school, but as part of our strategic plan and the Student Ownership Group, we're encouraging kind of some extension of the classroom learning, so the students will have some choices that they can do that day and do some hands-on, real-life learning. Our staff will have a professional development day, and then our building will, the high school will be open for the election, and it'll make it a safe environment for parking and all of our community to go in and out of the building. And then, to mirror that in the spring, we will have the primary again at the high school, and on that day, we'll have a online learning day just for our high school students, and our staff will still report, but again, to limit the amount of traffic in and out on those days and for safety of everyone, students and our community. So that is a change, and then, we do have some additional professional development and teacher workdays at the beginning of the year. Within the school calendar, we've eliminated a few days and increased student days, but at the beginning of the year, we've got a combination of some teacher work time and some professional development days prior to school starting, instead of spreading those out throughout the school year. And this calendar still increases our student days by two this year, is that correct, for next year? Is it two additional student days for next year?
Sounds perfect to me.
Okay.
So basically, your professional development days, and Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, they're basically front-loaded instead of spread throughout the calendar, so.
Okay. I have a motion.
I move.
First of all, are there any questions? That could be, this could be one that could have some questions, I guess. I just wanted to clarify that when Dr. Blessing uses the term, at the beginning of the year, for people that might be watching on television, that is the school year and not January.
Three days, okay.
Three days. I have a motion?
I move to adopt the revised 2023-24 school year calendar.
Second.
Okay, we had a first from Mrs. Neese, a second from Mr. Daffler. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, so those changes have been approved. Next, we go to the first reading of the 2024-2025 school calendar. The first reading of the, excuse me, it's recommended that the first reading of the 2024-2025 school year calendar, 2024-25 school year calendar.
I'll just say run and repeat. It mirrors the changes that we just did in 23-24, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Going to the consent agenda. Approval of the overnight extended student trips.
Yeah. We'll vote on the 24-25 next month. We always have to have a first reading.
It's all minus of the.
Oh.
Yeah. But we'll do that next month.
Okay.
You might have printed the calendar draft form, the agenda. When did you print your agenda, do you remember? Okay, yeah.
That was from her.
That was from, it was still in the PD on Tuesday.
There was a couple changes made.
Can you guys know if I see something different, I'm going to ask, so.
No, thank you.
No, and you're right. You're right.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I got them out here.
You did well, sir. Okay, the consent agenda. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student trips. Girls' state bowling tournament, Arthur Smith, coach, Columbus, Ohio, March 9th and 10th, Scott Sally, coach. Item B. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the out-of-state travel for Arthur Smith, coach, girls' state bowling tournament, Scott Sally, coach, Columbus, Ohio, March 9th through the 10th. Dr. Laura Blessing, MCESC, team representative, Pathways for Prosperity, Houston, Texas, April 26th through the 29th. Alex Weaver, eighth-grade field trip, Washington, DC. Brenda Dickman, Ben Davis, Ben Gorleski, Brandy Henry, Christine Johnson, Jennifer Kopic, Jennifer Ennis, Harold, Jessica Ludi, Jeanne Toadvine, Kim Stewart, Michael Famira, Michelle Lieber, Robin Blathers, Renee Offenberger, Summer Mastrinardi, Taylor Hodges, Christopher Clinton, Cheryl McNutt, Jennifer Hockey, James Johnson, Joyce Sparks, Chris Longstruth, Kip Skank, Matt Gilbert, Ruby Arias, Ryan Hockey, Scott Buck, Cherie Summers, Zach Lipfin. That's all four of the eighth-grade field trip at Washington, DC, May 16th through the 19th. Dr. Laura Blessing and Amy Dobson, both presenters at the Voice for Equity in Vancouver, Washington, June 17th through the 22nd of 2023. Wow, I'm impressed. Good for you.
It was all Amy's work. I'm just her assistant.
Okay. A dynamic duo, right? Okay, Item C is the approval for $75,000 for the 2023 teacher mini-grants. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the $75,000 mini-grant appropriation for the 2023-24 school year. This is a joint funding program between the Board of Education and the Miami'sburg Schools Education Foundation Advisory. Excuse me. Item D is the approval of the board member trainings. It's in accordance with Board Policy BHBA, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following request for the training offered by the Ohio School Board Association. Mrs. Anne Neese, the High School Board Association Special Education Law Workshop, March 24th of 2023. Item E. Approval of consent items A through D. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent items A through D. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of consent items A Alpha through D Delta.
Second.
Okay, we had a first from Mr. Amsler, a second from Mr. Lewis. Mrs. Dobson, would you like to give us a little short presentation on your presentation?
I'm happy to give you an overview.
Please.
Yeah, so this is actually an opportunity for us to talk about the innovation in preschool in Miami'sburg. I had an opportunity, as you know, to present in Chicago and put some other presentation overviews, some summaries out there to some other conferences, and we were selected by this particular conference, which is, has a focus on equity. So I think there's a particular interest because of our focus with our preschool expansion to provide, you know, a spectrum of preschool services in the community and looking at in particular at how we can provide some socioeconomic diversity within our partnership with NBCDC. And again, that is funded through Preschool Promise, and so it's at no, you know, no additional costs to our community, to our taxpayers, and doesn't cost, take anything from the general fund. So it's very exciting. We actually, now that we're in the throes of kindergarten registration, we actually have 34 children from that program who have had high-quality preschool for this entire year, for five days a week, full day, who will be transitioning to kindergarten in our district next year. So get an opportunity to talk about that. I'm not sure it's being done anywhere else in the partnerships with Head Start, so hopefully, you know, this will maybe encourage others to think outside of the box on how to partner with other local agencies and entities.
I just applaud everything that you guys are doing with that. The innovation across our nation, that's us right now. I mean, that's kind of neat to think about. Miami'sburg actually been, probably been the first.
Yeah.
And everybody else wants to be like us, so that's pretty cool. I just, I had to say that, I love it. Almost gives me cold chills thinking about it.
Yeah, it's a privilege to be a part of it.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes. I guess that's sort of the glistening eyes. I guess that's sort of the glistening eyes, you know? I think maybe mine's done that right now. I'm very proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to the human resources agenda. A, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. The next thing I'm going to read will apply to A, B, and C. Employment in the Miami'sburg City School District is contingent upon the candidates submitting to and passing a BCII and an FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted Item B is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports, supplemental stipend and certificated and classified. There is a file attached to this, and if anyone would like to see those, they can ask for them in the central office. Item C, it's approval of human resources items A and B. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of human resources items A and B.
I second it.
Okay, a first from Mr. Lewis, a second from Mrs. Neese. Mr. Homan?
Business as usual.
Business as usual.
Business as usual.
Okay.
Nothing new and exciting on there, so.
Well, I think is Mrs. Woods' retirement on there this time? Is she, is her retirement letter in here?
It might be.
So I do want us to pause and recognize Mrs. Woods. I think we shared the press release earlier this week, so. I mean, I think when she handed the resignation to Mr. Homan and I, we both said, oh, we're not gonna open this. So we wanna recognize Mrs. Woods and her accomplishments within our district for 21 years, I believe, so she will be greatly missed. We're gonna keep her hard at work until the end of her contract, though.
Yeah, well, I tell you what, I'm sure that she'll do that on her own. She's just made that way. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay, that section is passed. Next, we'll move on to agreements and contracts. Approval of school-based partnerships agreements with Head Start is recommended by the Superintendent and the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the Head Start School-Based Partnership Item B is recommended by the Treasurer CFO, Mr. Blevins, I just had to say that, that agreement with Julian and Groob Incorporated CPAs be approved for the services provided for the Miami'sburg City School District as presented. Item C, memorandum of understanding with Samaritan Behavioral Health Incorporated is recommended by the Superintendent and the Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with Samaritan Behavioral Health Incorporated. These memorandum of understanding agreements confirm the partnership between Samaritan Behavioral Health Incorporated and the Miami'sburg City School as presented. Item D is recommended by the Superintendent and the Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with Adamus. Those memorandums of understanding agreements confirm the partnership between Adamus and the Miami'sburg City Schools as presented. Item E, it's approval memorandum of understanding with South Community Incorporated. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with the South Community Incorporated as presented. Item F is recommended by the Superintendent and Treasurer CFO that a general service agreement with Meta Solutions be approved effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, as presented. Is that right? Andy, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. I was thinking five years for some reason, but it goes on.
That's the per, per student.
Okay. All right. Item G, approval of Schedule I Core Services and Schedule II with Meta Solutions, effective July 1st, 2023. Is recommended by the Superintendent and the Treasurer CFO that a core service agreement, Schedule I. Summary of costs, Schedule II with Meta Solutions be approved with effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Core services fee for 2023 and 2024 will be $16.75 per pupil. Item H, approval of the Internet Access Service Agreement with Meta Solutions, effective July 1st, 2023. It is recommended by the Superintendent and the Treasurer CFO that an Internet Access Service Agreement, E-Rate, with Meta be approved effective July 1st, 2023 for five years as presented. I'm assuming that that would be through June 30th of 2028, then? Okay, thank you. Item I, approval agreement with Montgomery County Educational Service Center, Graduation Alliance Incorporated. Recommended, the Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve an agreement between Montgomery County Educational Service Center and the Miami'sburg City Schools to provide educational services from Graduation Alliance Incorporated as presented. Item J, the approval of State Fund Group Rating and Unemployment Services Agreement with Sedwick Managed Care of Ohio. Is recommended by the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, Director of Human Resources, that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Sedwick MCO for workers' compensation and unemployment compensation services as presented. Okay. Approval of the agreement with Warren County Educational Service Center. Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend approval of the attached agreement with Warren County Educational Service Center for the student services of the WCESC Wellness Center as presented. L, approval of the agreement with Senior Assistance Incorporated. Is recommended by the Superintendent and the Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with Senior Assistance Incorporated for student transportation to the Wellness Center in Mason, Ohio as presented. Approval of agreement and contracts, items A through L. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreements and contracts, items A through L. Do I please have a first?
I move for the approval of agreements and contracts, items A through L. Second.
Was that a second from you, Mr. Amsler?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Man, I'm glad we don't have to do like we used to do about 15, 16 years ago, when, whenever anybody did the motion, they had to read the motion exactly the same way that it was presented. That took forever. Yeah. Dr. Blessing?
Sure.
The approved, item I.
I.
The Graduation Alliance Incorporated Agreement.
Okay.
What is that? I'm unfamiliar with that for some reason.
I'll take that. Mr. Toadvine, that is our online program that we use for our alternate educational programming, for our after-school program. And we also use it as a credit recovery option for some students, and we use it for our students that might be on a different schedule during the day.
Okay, thank you. Now I remember. You presented it before.
It's the same contract, they just added another pathway that we could use, so that we just had to update the contract.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions about any of those items? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, we go to the financial agenda items, and Mr. Blevins' favorite. And there are, we'll go A through D, I believe. A, it's acceptance of the official fiscal year 2022 auditor's report. Is recommended by the Superintendent and the Treasurer that the Board of Education accepts the fiscal year 2022 auditor's report. This single audit report covers the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. A copy of the full report is available in the Treasurer's office. Item B. Authorization for the amendment to the appropriations of the Certificate of Estimated Resources. Is recommended by the Treasurer CFO, Mr. Blevins, that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. Item C, resolution of accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing necessary tax levies Item D. Do you have that? Are you there? Item D.
Yep.
I'm gonna read that. Just take this.
Item D, approval of purchase orders. The Treasurer CFO recommends Board of Education approve the following purchases as presented. $58,382.76 technical equipment for high school, Forward Edge. $30,865 Dayton Cincinnati Technology, 30 laptops. $132,510 for Dayton Cincinnati Technology, 432, I'm sorry, 430 Chromebooks. $37,990.22 Forward Edge Incorporated licensing renewal. $72,082.75 Forward Edge Incorporated for wireless points and switching equipment. $56,507 Dayton Cincinnati Technology for technical equipment at Medlarview.
Thank you. A good break. Item E is approval of the financial items A through D. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the financial items A through D. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of financial items A through D.
I have a second, please.
I second.
First, Mr. Lewis, second, Mrs. Neese. Anybody like to address that?
Yeah, the first couple items on there are just compliance, pretty much, normal stuff. And then the, let's see. The accepting of the tax resolution is just an estimate of what they think we're gonna get in taxes. And then the purchase orders, it's just that time of year where renewals and things are coming up.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay. That is passed. Number nine, acceptance of donations. Is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's 018 account unless indicated otherwise. $4,000 from the MHS band boosters for indoor wind staff stipends. Number two is the Riften chair from Norah Coil beer sack to be used for students with disabilities, valued at $3,701. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the donations.
Second.
Okay, we had a first from Mrs. Neese, second from Mr. Lewis. Katie, would you mind addressing the gift for the chair, please?
One of our OTAs came onto this through Facebook post, I believe, someone that had it and was in almost new condition, and they didn't need it any longer, and they were just looking to gift it to someone that could use it. A Riften chair is a chair that some of our multiple disability students use for mobility, standing, and things along that line. So it's a very expensive piece of equipment, so it's kind of nice to have, for us to have in the storage for when, when we need it.
That's awesome. It's a big thank you for that. And then, of course, the boosters. We have, we have wonderful boosters, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We really do. I mean, that's speaking from an old man, it's been around a long time and seen a lot of gifts from them on different things, so it's neat. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we will go to our reports, and the first report, I'm glad that you decided to do that, because I think I'd be running out of words, because Joe, I know you're very wordy, I hope you hear this. I'm kidding, Joe. So anyway, we will go to Dr. Blessing for Joe Isaacovich of the Miami Valley Career Center.
Sure, he apologizes for not being in attendance this evening, he had a family obligation, but he wanted to let us know that applications, they are continuing to accept those for the class of 2025. So far, they've received 1,529 to date applications compared to 1,381 at this time last year. First time in memory that we've exceeded 1,500 applications. The National Technical Honor Society, the ceremony will be held at the MVCTC this Sunday, March 19th at 2:00 PM. We have about six or seven students being recognized, so I plan to attend, and we've invited the student, the special folks that the students recognize, some of those are from Miami'sburg. So there are 122 total being recognized. And then on April 15th, they have the MVCTC prom, and it is gonna be held from 8:00 to 10:00 in the MAC at the MVCTC. The theme is A Night in Hollywood. And Miami'sburg CTE state qualifiers for HOSA, Madeline Jewell, she was in medical technology, and she placed third. The BPA, Jeremiah Byrd, Python programming, he received a first place. Aiden Freeman, C++ programming, first place. Kayden Hanky, intermediate word processing skills, third place. Elijah Rose, computer network technology, second place in Skills USA. Christopher Hoskins, TeamWorks Team, which is construction and carpentry, placed third. Anthony Ewing, Automotive Manufacturing Contest of Robotics and Automation, received a competing. William Butler, Robotics Automation Contest, Robotics Automation, competing. Construction renovation of the existing administration and class areas on the west side continues, and also their heavy equipment building has been completed, so they are still on schedule. The senior recognition ceremony is gonna be taking place on Wednesday, May 17th, at 6:30, and that will be at the Nutter Center at Wright State. And that is it for this month. Let Mr. Isaacovich know if you have any questions or comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we go to our legislative liaison, Mr. Corey Daffler.
Good evening.
I almost said that, but I couldn't say it with as much gusto as Mr. Joe, so I appreciate you doing that, Corey.
I will first touch on a few bills that I talked about last month. One is Senate Bill 1, which would change, rename the Department of Education to the Educational Workforce. That passed the Senate 26 to 7. This puts a lot more of the ODEs- This puts a lot more of the ODE's responsibilities into the governor's office and really gets, takes a lot of power or decision-making away from the ODE. There's a companion bill in the House, House Bill 12, that mirrors a lot of the same language. It's in its third hearing in the committee. Second would be the Senate Bill 14. This would allow the school districts to employ veterans without license from the armed forces, just I think this is another bill to try to encourage people to come and help the school system. The third bill from last week, month, Senate Bill 6, which would prohibit the state teacher's retirement system and school employment serves, among others, from making investment decisions for primarily a purpose to influence environmental, social, and corporate governance. It's had a couple hearings in the Senate Finance Committee. I used to write all this stuff out and I decided to do something different here and tag instead of go through and write every single thing, so. Uh, the fourth bill, Senate Bill 17. This bill would require the state board to update the standards and model curriculum of financial literacy and entrepreneurship in grades nine through 12 to include free-market capitalism content. A few things I took from the bill that I think are, that they're wanting to have in there, the state board shall incorporate into standards of model curriculum for finance, literacy, and entrepreneurship for grades nine through 12. Academic content regarding free market capitalism, the academic context shall include some of these items. Individuals control their own ability to work, earn wages, and obtain skills to earn and increase wages. Wealth is created by providing good and services that people value at a profit, and both sellers and buyers seek to profit in some way in free-market transactions. Thus, profit earned through transactions can be consumed, saved, reinvested in the business, or dispersed to shareholders. The political future of the free market including legally protected property rights, legally enforceable contracts, patent protections, and the mitigation side effect of market failures. I think this is all very valuable for kids to learn. That is how this country is built and how we can succeed. And hard work will pay off eventually if you stick with it. So, a couple new bills coming out of the House, House Bill 6, which would enact the Save Women's Sports Act to require schools, states, institutions, higher education, and private colleges to designate separate, single-sex teams and sports for each sex. House Bill 8. The rights to require public school to adopt the policy of parental notification of students' health and well-being and instructional material with sexually explicit content. These are all bills that are being introduced in the House. And I think that is all I got for this week, this month.
That's a bunch.
There's a lot more. Oh, actually, six was House Bill 1, which was, there's so much of House Bill 1 that I don't understand. But the main takeaway I have is taking money away from the local school districts. They're trying to redo the income tax, property tax. I don't know, you can look at these bills online and they can be 30, 40, 50 pages long. It's not necessarily the best read ever that you could, you could have, but we got to keep an eye on House Bill 1, so.
Yeah, definitely, House Bill 1 could be a problem when you start talking about cutting millions of dollars in a short-term, well, any long-term or short-term, you know. We already are living on the allowance we've had for over 12 years. Actually, 16, it'll be 16 years because I've been on the board 16 years and we have not asked for more money. Renewals, yes, but not, not more money. So I think my, as a board and as administrators and as staff, we'd be very proud of that, you know, and we certainly cannot take a cut in our allowance, that's for sure.
Yeah, estimated of millions, one point something in 2024, up to two point something in 2025, so.
Yep, that's a lot of money. And I hope, you know, we don't really know how the, how the funding formula is going to go from year to year. It seems, I think, like I said, I've been doing this 16 years and I think it's probably changed at least three or four times in that amount of time. You know, sometimes for the good and sometimes not so good, but hopefully, hopefully it'll be for the good. Okay, let's move on to the student achievement liaison, Mr. Chris Amzler, please.
Again, our February District Student of the Month was Ryan Palmer from the Miami'sburg Middle School, but also receiving recognition for February was Bauer Elementary School, Haley Hager. Bear Elementary School, Danielle Barney. Jane Chance Elementary School, Nyla Aston. Kinder Elementary School, Annabelle McQueen. Mark Twain Elementary School, Chase Gonzalez. Medlar View, Muath, Altoharney. Mound Elementary School, Daphne Sargent. And the Miami'sburg High School was Melissa Shaw. So congratulations to all those representatives and to Mr. Palmer.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will come back to your minute. Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition Liaison, Anne Nice, and I believe Anne and I both were present at the meeting today.
Right.
I'm going to let her share all that good stuff.
First of all, I just wanted to recognize Jaylee Gillespie. She's our MHS student that won second place in the Montgomery County Drug Free Poster Contest. So that was really cool, and there's her poster, count on me to be drug-free. The meeting, the meetings are always on the same day as our school board meetings, so it makes it a little tricky, so bear with me here. Okay, so basically, just a few things that they are going to update the community resource guide in the next 30 days. Hopefully, our counselors will receive one of those or could ask for one. For Mental Health Awareness Month, they're actually going to move it to September because that's also Suicide Prevention Month. The GROW group, which is a Get Recovery Option Working, is going to do another blitz. That's where they go door-to-door in high overdose areas to offer mental health and additional resources.
And Anne, if you don't mind, that program that she's talking about is, has been in effect for a while now, short while.
Ever since, yeah.
Yeah, and it's been very, it's been very effective because it offers, helps them to get clean, and then it offers ways to be able to, at least be able to come up with food and, and medicine and stuff after they do, people that are addicted to certain things struggle to keep, keep, keep free, drug-free. So, anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that's really-
Yeah, you were there, so if you have something to say, that's fine.
That's a really, really, really good thing going on there.
Yeah. And then Caleb, I never did catch his last name, but from Deco's Recovery Center, talked about this other opportunity. Now, it's at the actual, it's at St. Vincent de Paul Center, I think you're all familiar where that is. And it's an Ohio recovery, it's called the Ohio Recovery Campus, and it's an all-encompassing campus for all kinds of substance detox. So they will have 30 beds for detox, 60 residential beds, it'll be open 24/7. Folks can be dropped off at the office that need help, law enforcement can drop people off. It sounds really good. It sounds a little bit like 115 that we already have, and then I know we have other mom-and-pop recovery centers.
The thing about this one is Medicare is, can be used.
Medicaid.
I'm sorry, Medicaid, yes, thank you. Medicaid, your comprehensive insurances can be used, and people that come there without insurance are not going to be turned away, which is a big deal for people that are trying to get a detox, so.
And that's true at 115 as well, that, you know, they take certain insurance, but they don't turn anyone away. Actually, I know someone that's at 115 right now, and that's going really well for her. But the open house is on March 23rd from 2:00 to 6:00, and that's on 865 South Patterson Boulevard. Basically, oh, another, the last thing really that I thought was interesting is they're going to have an overdose awareness day event on Thursday, August 31st, from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Levitt Concert Plaza, I don't know if you're familiar with that downtown Dayton. Dr. Blessing, they're going to have a Run for Recovery on September 3rd that you might want to be part of. But yeah, this is a good group of people really working hard to help all of our people who are affected by addiction. I don't know if you have anything else to say. We're going to finally have our first in-person meeting in May, I believe it is.
Yeah, hopefully, they've said that a long now for about a year, but the Levitt Pavilion, if you're not familiar with it, is, is starting to be used a lot. Last year, there was over 26,000 people that were there. It's, you can go there for free and there, there's food places around, clothes that are usually very cheap when they're having events there, and, and everybody gets in free to the events, and a lot of it's, you know, well-known bands and, you know, all kinds of things like that, that, that venue is free, which is neat.
Yeah, one other, one other thing, I don't know if you stayed, I think you stayed on the whole time, too. Sheriff Rob Struck, they're very concerned about their jail. They want to redesign it, redesign it. They've had some overdose deaths in the jail, a lot of mental health problems, and the cartel keeps changing drugs, so that's a problem as well. So they do have plans for redesign of the jail, which was really good to hear.
Yeah, he, he said something that stuck in my mind, Anne, was when Sheriff said he had an individual that was on 24-hour watch, and, you know, they had nothing that he could harm himself with, they didn't think, as they were going out the jail door, he grabbed the door and slammed his head in it. You know, he said there's, there's doors available, but that can't happen. And those are some of the things that he's talking about that are way outdated and needs to change, you know, updated, been updated. So that's something that's certainly, something that we all should, should be concerned about, I guess. And he was very open, and I, I thought he was very open and, and just laid it out there the way it is. I mean, you know, the terrible things that go on in a jail that he, that they could control if they had a different setup, which was kind of interesting. Thank you, Anne. Okay. Next is myself, and I'm going to turn, turn myself over to Mr. Lewis and Mr. Amzler. I don't know how they, they, they set it up between the two of them to be me.
I got the short straw.
Thank you, sir.
The latest Making a Difference Awards were presented at Kinder Elementary School. Reading Recovery Teacher Kathy Barker was nominated by Jessica Hoben for how she provides her students with so much more than just academic support. Jessica said she is not just a literacy intervention teacher, she has dedicated her career to improving the lives of students, and Miami'sburg has been blessed to have Kathy in the district. Also presented with the Making a Difference Award was transportation bus driver, David Wordinger. David volunteers at Kinder every day between his bus routes to help struggling students with tutoring. Mr. Hobbs said Mr. Dave truly cares about the kids and wants to help them. He is so kind and patient when helping students, and they absolutely love him. Congratulations to both of these outstanding employees. MHS teachers Chris House and Judy Hayes Casey partnered with Principal Shannon Rupert and teacher Caitlin Bell last semester to provide each student at Bauer Elementary School a stuffed monster. Templates, templates were sent to the Bear students to design in color. The completed templates were returned to Mrs. House and Mrs. Hayes Casey. The Viking prep students duplicated the students' designs. Bear Elementary staff passed the monsters out to the students during February's Kindness Week. The following MHS students attending MVCTC are invited, along with their honorees, to the 35th National Technical Honor Society induction ceremony hosted by the Miami Valley Career Technology Center chapter. Anthony Ewing and his honoree, Linda Wells. Alicia Grimm with honoree, John Oliver. Nathaniel Kessel, no honorees selected at this time. Michael Newbauer, whose honoree is Brad Myers. Jenna Samples with honoree, Tom Madigan. Travis Templeton, none, no honorees selected at this time. Mallory Velez with honoree, Jason Curry. And Caleb Wells, none, no honorees selected at this time. The ceremony will be held on Sunday, March 19th, 2023, at 2:00 PM at the MVCTC campus. We have some athletics highlights. The Vikings sent four wrestling qualifiers to the state tournament this past weekend, and all wrestled very well against the toughest competition in the entire state. Fletcher Rose finished the weekend with one win, two losses, falling one match short of placing in a hard-fought 3-2 match. Jaden Cochran finished the weekend with two wins and three losses, ending up his 100th career win on his way to an eighth place, eighth place finish at the tournament. Abel Engo finished the weekend, three wins, three losses, finishing his season with 49 wins and claiming Miami'sburg's single-season wins record, as well as a sixth-place finish at the tournament. And last, but definitely not least, is Senior Cassia Zammott, who went 4-0 on the weekend en route to claiming her third straight state title and being crowned, crowned most outstanding wrestler of the 2023 Ohio High School Athletic Association Girls Wrestling Division. Senior Anna Newkirk completed, competed at the Ohio High School, wait a minute, OHSSA, excuse me, State Swim and Dive Championship meet in Canton. Anna qualified in 27th place and held her own against a tough field comprised of the top 32 swimmers in the state of Ohio. This is her third year qualifying for the state finals for swimming in her high school career. Anna finished in a time of 1 minute, 8 seconds, .16, taking fourth in her heat and 27th overall. And finally, Miami'sburg's cheer program made it all the way to Orlando, Florida, for Nationals this 22-23 season. The game day team made it to finals and received seventh out of 26 teams. The comp team made it to the finals and got the bronze medals. That's all I have.
Okay, good. Well, I thought I was going to make it through all this without messing up. Okay. Comments? All right. I'm going to go to the board and staff comments. Is there any thing that anybody wants to do as far as going around? I'm talked out myself tonight, but we start down there with the youngster and go from there.
I'll keep it short and sweet.
I'll keep it short and sweet. Just want to thank everybody for their hard work, all Miami'sburg staff, and we're on the end of the year here, getting into spring, and I'm sure kids will get a little wound up here, but I'm ready for spring and ready for some NCAA tournament. So thank everybody. Thank you for all the hard work.
I'll be brief as well. I want to start out by thanking Mrs. Huber in the Kinder presentation. Thank you for that. Very nice job. I know the winter sports has concluded, or if not, basically, pretty much everything has, and we're getting ready in the spring, so I wish them much success in the springtime. And then finally, I know we're going to get other opportunities to congratulate Mrs. Woods, but she will be sorely missed, hard to replace, but a very good principal and very thorough. So I wish her all the best in her retirement. And with that, I will move it on to Mrs. Nice.
I just wanted to thank you for the Kinder presentation and also that opportunity to be at your building every Friday with Ms. Hess. It's really just delightful to be there. I miss being at the middle school, though, with you, Mrs. Thomas. It just, I see all, you know, the things that were in the presentation being done there at that school. And I saw some of the kids that want to help me in the presentation, too. They're great little helpers. Also, just thanks to all the librarians and the assistant principal. You have Mr. Klein back there helping us tonight, the paraprofessionals, and, you know, the volunteers. The volunteers are really the icing on the cake. I can't say enough about, you know, having volunteers in our school system. They're just wonderful. One other thing I wanted to do was recognize Dr. Blessing for being asked by Learn to Earn and Preschool Promise to do the welcoming speech at the recent Readiness Summit at Sinclair. She gave the welcoming speech for over six hundred participants. She spoke on behalf of all the Montgomery County superintendents who came to the stage with her, and I think there's seventeen, right? And she had a wonderful speech about the commitment to getting our Montgomery County young children ready for school. So that was pretty impressive to go to the summit and see that she was the head welcome speaker. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. As we stated earlier in tonight's meeting, we'll be celebrating a lot in April. School Librarian Appreciation Days, April fourth; Assistant Principal Appreciation Weeks, April third through the seventh; and then Paraprofessional Appreciation Days, April fifth. Those three, well, those two days in that week, we are on spring break. So, yes, excuse me, spring break, correct? Yes.
People turned through the text, yes.
Okay. The way you kind of looked at me, I thought I made a mistake, but as far as I was, I don't get a spring break anymore, but I was pretty sure it was.
You did great.
Thank you. I'm only stating this because if you want to reach out to these people, it might be good to do it before spring break, at the end of National Volunteer Appreciation Week, the seventeenth through the twenty-first. But I want to thank all those people for everything they do for our students and families in our district. Mr. Kleber, thank you for your technology update.
Yeah, thank you.
And Mrs. Huber and the Kinder Elementary students and staff, thank you for your presentation. Keep an eye on those Lewis boys. Sneaky. But I'm good.
Okay. Mrs. Dobson, good luck on your adventure out to Washington. I know that's a little ways away, but I know you definitely will be well-prepared, and you'll do, you make Miami'sburg proud, you and Dr. Blessing both out there. So thank you for just everything that you do and the extra time you're putting into all this, because it's a big feather in everybody's cap. So that's a really, really neat thing. Mr. Kleber, are you there? Where'd you go?
Because he had to get home for that tip-off.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. You're not one to watch Indiana, are you?
Tomorrow, they play tomorrow night, and then they're going to play on Saturday. I actually have tickets to the one.
Really?
But it's in Bloomington. It's close.
Yeah. I have to say something about Mrs. Woods. I guess if I, over the years that I've been in education, I'd have to say that she's one of the angels that I've met, that she always seemed to be able to handle, turn a bad situation around somehow, but in a way that, without anger or remorse or any of that kind of stuff going on. She was just a nice, level-headed person that parents and kids learned to love as they got to know her. So I'd like to wish she was here to personally thank her, but I'm sure we'll have that opportunity somewhere along the line. But anyway, that's pretty much all I have to say at this time. Thank you, Mrs. Huber, as usual. You did a great job, and your kids.
Month two, and I'm still here, so happy about that.
Oh, that's good, that's good. I keep telling him, he's got to get it in gear here. Most of our treasures, I have to go, "Shh, shh, cut off." You, I got to lift up. That's good, that's good, though. I'll make up for the talking part, I guess.
I was getting ready to say that.
Dr. Blessing?
Thank you, Mr. Toadvine. We had our ACT test this week at the high school, so thank you to Mrs. Moore for orchestrating that. It was on Tuesday with our snow showers, so again, the state gives us a few days to get that completed, so it worked out. We had a lot of help and volunteers that day and retests and extended time, so she definitely got her steps in on Tuesday. So we appreciate that and that coordination, and I believe they're already on their way back to get scored, so exciting. I know she was glad to have that completed today. Preschool and kindergarten registration did begin last week, so Mrs. Dobson, do you want to give, I mean, not an exact count, but I think we're doing pretty well so far, correct?
We are. At this point, we have right around two hundred students who have already applied at the end of the first week for kindergarten, so we want to encourage families that they have children who will be five by August first to get out and register as soon as possible. You know, the earlier families register, the more we can do to prepare and engage them and help them get connected to their elementary schools. So we look forward to welcoming those students in August.
Do we know how many preschoolers?
That number includes our preschoolers from both Maddox Lang and Medlar View, or, yeah, the both programs that will be transitioning. I don't have an exact number.
You mean that number of new preschoolers we have?
Oh, for preschool registration? I do not, but I'm happy to get that and provide that information for the board. And then just a reminder to our families and our students that there is no School Monday for our students because it is the end of the quarter, so that means we are on to the fourth quarter of school. And so those nine weeks will go quickly, and a lot of exciting events for our seniors and the spring sports and whatnot. Some things as, from the administrative side, we have our bargaining coming up. We're doing some interest-based bargaining this year. We're starting with our MCTA first, and that begins on Friday, which is tomorrow. So I'll be providing some updates to all of you, so be on the lookout for that as we progress through that. And then we have our Teamsters following right up after that. In late April, we'll begin that as well. So both of those contracts do expire this summer, so we're hoping to get those settled and kick off the beginning of our fiscal year, July one. So that's exciting. We also have begun our enrollment study, so we met with some teachers and staff last evening to start looking at more data in depth and some other angles that were identified through the town halls. We're going to be having a parent meeting to acclimate some parents to our committee as well and do some school visits. So we'll be reporting, we'll have a full report in April. If I don't get any volunteers, I'll be providing that report, so stay tuned for that. And I just want to give a shout-out to all of our athletes and the great work they've done this winter and spring in their tournaments, and just what an honor for Cassia and for us to, I'm just excited to see where she'll go next year and all of her accomplishments continue. Maybe we'll be watching her in the Olympics soon, so I hope she's listening. And thank you, Mrs. Huber. Wonderful video and definitely the gleam in my eyes. So I'm so glad you're with us, and we're excited for moving forward and doing better for our students. So thank you.
I am just going to say ditto because everything everyone has said, I agree with you a hundred percent. The meeting's been long enough, so there we go.
Mr. Lewis, I was able to identify that number for you. We've had fifty-six students enroll for preschool, and that is a combination at both Maddox Lang and Medlar View. Keep in mind, they do have students that roll over, so three-year-olds and four-year-olds who are not going to transition to kindergarten will remain in the program. So those are fifty-six new registrations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you three have anything to add?
Just real quick, about this time last year, we did a community survey for our Safety and Sense of Belonging Committee as part of our strategic plan. That will be going out again right after spring break. So the week after spring break, we'll be sending a link out to that using our social media and some of the other channels that we did this last year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, good. And next, we'll go to our public comments. You guys mostly in here have heard this several times, but I'm going to read it anyway. The public will be given the opportunity for comments at the end of the board meeting. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak until a time of thirty minutes is used. We will give a thirty-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. And also, as a reminder, our expectations at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. We have one green sheet this evening. It's from Scott A. Taylor. And "Think and Grow Rich" is the topic.
Thank you, Dale. It's always a pleasure to come here and speak to you, and I expressly appreciate, Corey, what you shared about the legislation. It's kind of applicable to what I want to share today. I read this book called Think and Go Rich several years ago, and this changed my financial future when I read this book. This book is actually, talks about Andrew Carnegie's formula for making money based on the thirteen proven principles of riches. And it's not just money, it's just anything you want to do. Imagine in America, if you have a desire for something and you really believe you can have it, and then you set a date to get it, you create a plan to accomplish it, and then you assemble a team of people to get it, you will obtain it. And this has been proven over and over and over. Anyone who's successful in this life, in this country, in anything they drive themselves towards, this book is a must-read for anyone who wants to succeed, especially some of the legislative things you talked about, Corey, regarding entrepreneurship. This should be a must-read for anyone that really wants to succeed in anything. I want to give that to make a donation to the board of that book because I think it's something that could change the lives of students as well in this time of trying to be victims and oppressors. And secondly, I want to talk about something I observed at the Kettering School Board meeting the other day. Basically, there was this video that came out where Rick Early was caught talking about how he'd work around laws that prohibit critical race theory teaching, and also their policy for transitioning students on gender issues without parental consent. And I find what's so interesting is that what the written statements that Toby Henderson, who's their board president, had to say about it. First of all, he refused to acknowledge or explain anything about what was said on video, and that made me suspicious. I mean, if someone is caught talking about critical race theory or transitioning students without parental consent, they should at least address it. But secondly, I was shocked by what he had to go say after that, that he basically said that they must teach and follow the law. And I sent her Title IX that transgender individuals are protected under nineteen seventy-two, Title IX, and they're protected by the equal opportunity clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. But how do guys who make the decision that they're girls get protected under Title IX from nineteen seventy-two? Because it was designed to protect women and create women's sports. I figured it out. If they make that decision, they must be women, therefore, they're protected by that. I found that outrageous. In a time when the Attorney General has blocked the updates to Title IX, which attempted to add LGBT, I'll just finish in a moment, protections, the president of the board decides that he can do it, and he's a lawyer. I wonder if he's litigating against parents or not, and that's my big concern. It's around us, it's happening, and I just pray that if something like this comes to this school board, that they will do the right thing for our daughters. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we go to adjournment. I have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Second.
And we have a first from Mr. Daffler, second from Mr. Lewis. We'll call.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hamler?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned.